So this is the cover up through that period?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Wow, these are really loud. Okay, have nobody else got any other changes? Make a motion to go ahead and prove the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by DeGeorgio. Any other discussion? Lisa or Dana, can we get our roll call, please?
Brad?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
DeGeorgio?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, moving on. We're gonna do recognition of firefighters on behalf of Detroit Beaumont Hospital. Is there somebody here representing Troy?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna go over the four.
Absolutely, sounds good.
Thank you for putting these guys first. We really appreciate that. Steve, you wanna come up here with me, please, and I'll introduce you. Everybody, this is Steve Hudgens. He's the EMS coordinator for William Beaumont-Troy Hospital. And he was the instrumental part in the ceremony they had earlier this week for EMS Week. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started, and then Steve and I will hand out the awards, and then we'll take pictures and so on as we move along, so. So Steve Hudgens, EMS coordinator, William Beaumont-Troy Hospital. Thanks, Steve, for taking the time to come out this evening so that we could do it in front of the board and in front of the group and our family members and our fire family as well. This week, Monday, was the ceremony at William Beaumont-Troy, and a majority of our members weren't able to make it to be recognized, so the board was gracious enough to have us do it tonight. So a lot of our members are being recognized for extraordinary care in the fire service. So in all history about EMS Week, it was first authorized by President Joe Ford in 1974. National EMS Week is time to thank all EMTs, paramedics, and the whole EMS workforce for their service as they play a critical role in every community. This year, EMS Week, like I said, was May 15th through the 21st, correct? And one of the surgeons who was there who was presenting one of the awards caught my attention. He said, and I quote, "These men and women deserve recognition for their efforts all year round, not just for the week or for the day." And that really hit home for me. And he compared it to something along the lines of Mother's Day and Father's Day where they continuously work day in, day out. And I thought that was a great analogy for what EMS, each one of these individuals stands for and what they do day in and day out. So I believe those put their expertise and teamwork on the front lines every day. The rising to each challenge, especially throughout the last two years with COVID and everything else that was thrown at us, and I, and I think the board would agree with me, if you don't mind speaking for your board, we would like to thank them for their dedication, strength, and resiliency by taking everything that's thrown at you head-on as the fire service is the largest and greatest provider of EMS. So we'll be presenting these awards in two different categories. One is Door to Balloon Time. Steve's gonna elaborate a little bit on that. And the other one is Gift of Life Presentation. So we'll start with the Door to Balloon, Steve. You wanna go ahead, and I'll get the folder.
I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
It's an honor for me to represent Troy Beaumont, and thank you guys for the work that you do. Like the chief said, never underestimate the impact you guys have on the patients that you care for. It's truly tremendous what you guys do, even if it's not a 911 call, even running a patient to hospice. The impact is amazing. So thank you guys for the work that you do. For Door to Balloon, the important thing is you bring people in, we take them, open up their arteries, save a life, giving that person an extra chance for a longer life. And it's truly important what you do. The Door to Balloon Time that you guys brought in was 30 minutes. That's a lot of time for that person to have with a clogged artery that's blocked. And that quick a time response to open that up, give them a longer life, is truly important for them, for their family, and you just don't understand the impact. So thank you on behalf of Troy Beaumont.
So for our Door to Balloon, you guys remember who was here, so you wanna step forward? I'll give you your awards.
You gotta...
Your family and friends feel free to take pictures. I need Kyle Casper, Leary, Vacho, and me, and Slav. James Legree. Congratulations, Sergeant. Timothy Hile.
Good work, Tim.
Michael Alphansky. Good work, Mike. Neil Talaska.
Good work, Sergeant.
Brandon Casper. Good work, Brandon.
Sergeant Vacho. Good work, sir.
So how, guys?
Door to Balloon, there you go. Good teamwork, guys.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next hour for Gift of Life. On February 5th, Bruce Romeo responded to a difficulty breathing patient. The patient had passed away on 3/15. The family decided to generously donate the loved ones' organs, and this person generously saved two lives. Her right kidney saved a 67-year-old male, and her left kidney saved a 75-year-old female.
Can you talk about real quick, Steve, and I caught this at the ceremony on Monday. This is like a newer recognition that you guys are doing?
Yeah, this is new as of last year. Last year, we had one family that was recognized. This year, Beaumont recognized seven Gift of Life calls for a total of 35 paramedics. And two of the Gift of Lives came out of Bruce Romeo.
I thought I caught that.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Tim, Michael, Karen, and James Legree, step forward, please. I feel like this is deja vu. Michael Alphansky. Karen Viani. Good job, Karen. James Legree. Good job, Jack, Steve.
They face the worst.
Still working. Okay. So this call came in to Bruce Romeo on 7/13 of 21. Bruce Romeo responded to an unresponsive apneic patient found on the kitchen floor with electrocution marks on her left forearm and right foot. The patient did ultimately pass away on 7/19 of 21. The family decided to let their loved one become a donor. Their generosity saved two lives. Her left kidney saved a 59-year-old male, and her left kidney saved a 60-year-old male. Heart valves were also recovered for transplant. This lady here was brought to us originally to Beaumont, transferred to Hurley Hospital in Flint, and that's where her organs were harvested for saving.
Very good. Good work, guys. Wade Thompson Phelps, Eli Delmon, Talaska. Ryan Phelps. Neil Talaska. Yep. Good work, yeah. William Thompson. Good work, Bill. And Delmon. Josh Wade was also a team member, but he's not. Good work, Bill. Congratulations. Don't try to skate away. Sorry. I'm sorry about that. Walked the wrong way. Congratulations. I think that's it. Yeah, that's it for us.
Just a couple more words. For being a smaller department, you guys have brought in more awards in the last two years than some of the larger departments down that way. You guys do a phenomenal job. Being further north, they've done a lot of jobs.
I want to thank everybody. We're so proud of you guys. I mean, just keep up the good work. We can't say enough. And people that came, when we talked to them, they have nothing but good things to say about you, so don't do anything different. Just keep doing what you're doing. Thanks again for everything, so. Good?
Yep, good. Thank you.
All right, guys, thanks.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Doing this. Wait for them to clear out, I guess. Wanna wait a second, or do you wanna be called?
Wait until they call us.
Wait till they're in the building. More awards than a large department.
Yeah, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah. It's the whole, me and the guys that weren't getting awards, it's the whole department in general.
Right.
Command and everything.
It's fantastic.
Are you ready to move on? So right now, we come to item four, which is comments from the floor. I know we have a couple of issues tonight. We don't have a lot of people. But if you wanted to comment on one of the agenda items, now would be the time. We just wish that you would stand up at the podium, state your name and your address, and try to keep your comments limited to three minutes, if you could, and address all your questions to the board, so.
Good evening. I live in Bruce Township, McCalee, 7863L. My name is Dave Schrader, and my wife is here with me, Janice, and I'm here to speak as one of the only next-door neighbors to the Dog House, which is an animal wildlife group where they house animals at their site, and just here to talk about that. First, I want to say that Kelly has been very respectful, and we want to thank her for everything she's done to try to respect our privacy and safety. While she's been there, we've been there 21 years. Our concern is over what appears to be growth at the site over the last three years. We've seen what seems to be an expansion in the number of buildings there, the number of animals on site, and we've had numerous wildlife encounters in our yard with animals that appear to have been let go. The deer aren't afraid of us. We can walk right up to them, raccoons, other small animals. And just concerned over whether we have as a township oversight or plan to control development on a site like this. We don't want to see it overgrown and affect our safety, noise, et cetera, on the site.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Erin Stacks. I'm a wildlife rehabber out of St. Clair County. Been doing it almost 20 years. I wanted to address a couple of things regarding dog. There is an excess amount of wildlife in that area, and as a wildlife rehabber, we do have discretion on where we release according to laws, but in that discretion, we need to be aware that we're not over-innuding any one property of too many animals, tapping too many natural resources, but also not creating a nuisance to the people in that area to where it's gonna affect their property values, pass removal calls for animals getting in their attics. There is a certain way to do things, and a lot of these animals are regulated. Deer have to go back to the county they're coming from because of diseases, chronic wasting, EHD, EED, raccoons most definitely from distemper, rabies strains. They are a must to be released in the county in which they came from. So Macomb County is not shy of wildlife calls, so, and I know for a fact, I've seen the records, I've filed for FOIA for them. She's taken in wildlife from all over the state, and we don't know where they're being released, but I do know there's been an explosion of wildlife in your area. I'm getting calls from your residents, and I'm up by Port Huron. So, and there's been criminal charges against her two times within three years. So we all know something's going on, but you needed to be told by somebody that hasn't been charged, has been doing it almost 20 years, and has no problem telling you the right way and the wrong way to do things. I don't know Kelly. I don't care about Kelly. I care what she's doing to the animals, and I care about what's happening to them because of what she's doing and the undue stress that she's putting on your residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Keep in mind that we're not talking about dog. We're talking about the Macomb County Animal Ordinance, or that's what you guys are up here for. So Kelly's not here to defend herself, so if we can not focus on dog rescue, I mean, other than maybe the animals that maybe come from there, allegedly maybe coming from there.
These are her logs since 2015. All of these animals have been released. My house is very small. I live on McKee.
Few houses up the road.
I'm here to ask you to look at the Macomb County ordinance that Chief Randazzo came up here and presented back in October. I think it's a good idea, and what I'd like to do, I just kind of wrote something up. I just kind of like to read it for you. I really don't have anything against Kelly, but I do not like all of these animals being released and the damage that they're causing on the property. It's not just damage to the property. It's I run over them with my lawnmower because I can't see them, and then I have to clean them up. There's dead animals just all over. Just all over. I'll just be walking around wanting to see my garden, enjoy the flowers, and there's a dead possum. There's a dead raccoon. Now there's rafters. There's birds of prey out there now, too. So it's, like they said, there's been animal encounters. They come up to you. They come into your buildings. They come up to your animals. My dog killed a raccoon. That requires a trip to the vet for another rabies shot. You know, it's starting to cost money, a lot of money, so. This is what I wrote. I'm having an issue with nuisance animals on my property. I wrote the board members an email in April of 2021, and again, April 18th of 2022. You know the issues for those emails, so I won't go over those issues in detail. The Bruce Township ordinance pre-2015 would have prevented what residents are going through right now. It is the post-2015 ordinance that set all of this in motion. I've been in contact with the Department of Natural Resources, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, and Macomb County Animal Control. The fact remains, the Bruce Township ordinance change in 2015 set this situation in motion. This needs to change. I'd like to explain a little bit about the timeline of how this all came about. Before I do, please keep in mind that the previous township board, no matter how well intentioned, set the stage for all of this to be happening right now. In January 2015, the Bruce Township ordinance was changed. There's a waiting packet. It's kind of late. It's on file. In February, the next month, 2015, the Bruce Township ordinance was changed again. There's now a waiting packet on file. In March 2015, DNR issued a waiver of wildlife rehabilitation permit. The difference is the old ordinance and the old ordinance, it removed the word wildlife and made it a domesticated animals only ordinance. That's all we have right now. In May of 2015, I needed to have a roof put on my house. The raisin raccoon ripped through the venti in the shingles and had a litter of kittens in the attic. I didn't think much of the situation at the time. I just thought it was normal rural living, but then, 2015 to 2017, I started noticing all those nuisance animals around the property. Dead animals, animals getting into the garage, animals getting into the shed, animals coming up to family members. A fox killed my duck, coming up to my dogs. These animals consisted of fox, plural, raccoons, possums, squirrels, woodchucks, and the like. 2018, after noticing all of these animals, the DNR rehab that was going on on McKee Road, I'd been contacted Richard Corey. He was told by the DNR rehab that only one squirrel and one bird was released on her property. I didn't believe it. We went back and forth, so I requested her logs through a FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, request, and I got those logs. These are those logs. Excuse me. These are all the animals that she released. 2015, 44 animals. 2016, 44 animals. 2017, 82 animals. I just received 2018 logs. They landed. There's quite a bit that's been pulled back because of pending litigation. I received 2018 and 2021, but I have not done up, you know, a spreadsheet and received the counts on them. But in 2020, the counts went up to 376 animals were released on her property. That's a total, just those four years, of 546 animals. You should all have this in the email that I sent to you. I've contacted DNR. They've told me the animals are now mine to kill. They cannot be moved off my property unless I hire a critter control, a licensed critter control company. Average price is $200 an animal. Last year, on my own, I had to take 29 animals, and it's a mixture of what I was telling you about. It's too expensive for me. I'm retired. You know, it's not my problem. I shouldn't have to be taking care of these animals. I should not have to be trapping them. I should not be killing them. I should not have this property damage. We're protected by that old ordinance, so we're not anymore. Okay, I do not work for DNR. It's a senseless release of these animals. The public has brought animals to this property thinking that they're going to be rehabbed. They are, I suppose, and then they're released, and they're fighting for the same resources. Neighbors. Neighbors have to kill them. They're getting killed on the road. I just went up to Shands for groceries the other day, and I hit a groundhog on the way home. I didn't see it. It ran out between my front tires and my back tires. I heard it, looked in the window, and saw it flying across the road. So there's just too many animals fighting for the same resources, and Macomb County Animal Control should take care of that. One other thing I wanted to mention is, when I was working...
You gotta wrap it up, though. You're gonna have to wrap it up pretty soon, okay?
Yes.
Three minutes.
One other thing while I was working is, she had a horse that was out in the road all the time. I remember that, I saw it. I ran into it twice. It was a foggy day. I can't remember spring or summer, but I was not gonna get out of my car on a foggy day on McKee Road to go move that horse off the road. But that's dangerous. Somebody's gonna get hurt. And somebody's gonna get hurt shooting these things. Somebody's gonna get, you know, be hurt by biting them, getting bit, or by the disease that they carry. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
And I think we should really seriously consider the Macomb County ordinance or something similar.
Appreciate all your emails and all your board comments. Thanks to Schrados and Erin. Thanks.
Just a quick question. I'm sorry. Do you want me to stand up and go back?
You should, so everybody could hear you.
Do you guys have a copy of the animal control ordinance that you're proposing or that's on your agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have one that we can review?
I don't have a copy made that I can get one to you. If you got an email, I can always forward it to you.
You got, what's your email address? You wanna write it down?
Yeah, anything in our packet is...
Because we're really, you know, here to slam that.
Right, yeah.
But I know that's a cause for concern.
Yeah, maybe another issue another day. We're just worried about the...
Oh, really?
...concern on what's on the agenda right now tonight.
And I think everybody thought that this included, was under that ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you. Any comments?
Hello, my name is Laura Fiori, and I live at 6 and 5 Willflower Lane in Bruce Township. My husband and I have been residents of Bruce Township, homeowners, and taxpayers for 20-plus years. We have two children who are students at Willflower, and we're very concerned about the most recent events at Willflower Middle School. I am here today with you to share in concern and plead with you to retain an officer at the Willflower Middle School. With the charge of being a member of EXPAD, a local district of Willflower, I feel that we have to do whatever we can to protect our kids and your community. Before we make your decision to vote for the ordinance matter, I encourage you to reach out to your neighbors who may have students at Willflower Middle, or maybe visit the school in a rather indecisive ties and observe the kids that are coming out of the school. It's just not good. This is Romeo. I feel like it's a hometown community where we have to look out for others. My second child is an eighth grade student at the school. He's gonna be leaving. I'm pleading with you to do this not just, it's just not my kids I'm worried about. I'm worried about everybody's. You just never know what can happen, and I think EXPAD is a perfect example of that. Perhaps speak with the school administration to understand a resource officer being that, and how could that, how it could benefit everyone, not just the kids, the staff, too. I'm praying for those, for the principals, and for the teachers. Please keep in mind that if the school goes, so does the community. I appreciate your time. I just, it's a huge thing, right? These kids are our future, and we have to look out for their best interests. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Derek Lees. My wife and I have one child at Romeo Middle and another in the school district. We reside at 70900 Carnegie Lane in Bruce Township. I've attended previous board meetings here, paying particular interest to the discussion about the resource officer at the middle school. I was left under the impression last time that I was attending one of these meetings that it was basically a done deal. There were some odds and ends to tie up with the agreement with Romeo. But overwhelmingly, the Bruce Board would support the shared cost, the Romeo police resource officer. Hopeful and informed, but I'd like to address any board members who are not in full support of this resource. In this era we're living in where people are being so divided and are failing to be taken care of in times of mental duress, sickening crimes are taking place every day. They can strike at any time, and they always will strike when we don't expect them to. For those board members making the obvious recommendation to support, thank you. For any who are against this, take a look at yourself and decide for yourself if you could live with the decision after the unthinkable happens at our school. could live with the decision after the unthinkable happens at our school, under your watch. Let's get this done, this discussion's been going on for way too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Catherine Ellerbrock, eight nine eight five Grand Oaks Court, I am a Romeo Middle School parent. I'm here tonight to encourage you to support efforts to place an officer at Romeo Middle School, and to fund ten percent of the cost. This should be an easy vote, it's a no-brainer. I'm surprised, but it's not a no-brainer. The safety of our children in school is paramount, it's top priority in this community, or it should be, and the cost to the township would be minimal, I think we're talking sixty-five hundred dollars, something like that. I teach at a little school, I can tell you that administrators are stretched very thin these days, the time it takes them to investigate and handle threats, interactions on social media, vaping and weapons has increased exponentially the past few years. Our middle school is the size of a high school, and having an officer to assist in these matters, to provide an added level of security, and to foster positive relationships with students would be invaluable. While no tensions are high these days, do you know what it's like to have to talk to a row of six graders about how they should use a short sleeve to create a tourniquet to save a classmate? Do you know what it's like to explain to an eleven-year-old how to decide whether they should hide, fight back, or run for their life? Do you know what it's like to tell them what they have to know what to do in case their teacher gets shot mid-air, and they're on their own to survive? We know these tragedies are rare, but these are rare things our staff and students are dealing with. We ought to learn to provide the utmost safety and security. If you vote this down, will you explain to those teachers and students why paying a small sum to give added assistance and protection isn't a priority? With all of the cases piling up against Oxford right now, do you want to ever have to say that you turned down an opportunity to make our schools safer? While I know it goes down to money, I'll try to correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but looking at the financials of this township, you're doing okay. Your position looked good last year, based on your last audit, I believe the board just gave three percent raises to elected officials in the township. We have money for that. Did you get elected officials' raises, but you weren't allotted? Sixty-five hundred dollars for school safety. Property tax revenue and both increased by six percent last year. People are moving here for the land and the community, but also the school system. I understand that fiscal responsibility is a priority, I don't know all of you, I know one of you, I grew up with our kids, so I know that at least one of you values family, children. I hope you can find the sixty-five hundred dollars in your budget to do what's best for the kids of Bruce Township. This is an opportunity for each board member to show that the middle school, children of this community are worth the sixty-five hundred dollars to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Christine.
Good evening, board.
Hello.
Just for the record, Christine Melzon, I'm the president of the village of Romeo, I live at two twenty-five North Main Street in Bruce Township. I just wanted to take a minute, put a different hat on. Thank you Chief Whitkin for all you do and for your staff. As many know, people know, or maybe not know, we contract services with Bruce Township, and the service that you do provide is top-notch. I echo Supervisor Philbrook's sentiment that we've never heard one bad thing, so keep up the good work. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Just as we are proud of you, we're also proud of our police department, and we look forward to partnering with this board to provide an excellent service resource officer to that campus, so that we can, again, collaborate and work to protect all of these innocent children, so, passionate about this. I just would reiterate that both times that this agenda item came before our board, it was unanimous, unanimous support for, to move this forward, at a much greater cost to the village than, than the ten percent. So, we're picking up thirty percent of that cost, and asking Bruce to pick up ten percent. So, again, I look forward to your vote and hope that you'll support this, so, thank you.
Thanks Christine. Good evening, Todd.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Todd Robinson, Superintendent of Romeo Community Schools. I come in peace. I've seen on the other side of public comment, as you know, many times, but, yeah, I felt compelled tonight to come and just share a few thoughts, and I got a little context, because I've had some conversations with some of you, but not all of you, so, in the fall of twenty eighteen, I began the conversation about bringing our school resource officer to our, um, you know, projected combined middle school. I would add, in short, I was a middle school principal for fifteen years, so I have a fond affection for middle-level adolescents. And, man, Mrs. Ellerbrock, we're, we're cut from the same cloth, because there's some people in the world that like to be around middle school kids, and there's a lot of people in the world that just, maybe not so, so much. So, there, in my court, and having the talent, that I had working with those, I know that that size of a middle school was, was certainly gonna present some challenge, just, just by the amount of students alone. I want to make sure that we're not a lack of that. We have very good kids at Romeo Middle School and Romeo, we have very good families, we have dedicated staff. As we make sure that the body of our town, not one individual, school resource officer otherwise, is gonna prevent an act of violence, but collectively, I think we have the opportunity to bring an individual to our school that provides additional presence, and of course, as a law enforcement officer, that's at a different level, there are staff that we employ. Also, the opportunity to work with a variety of different school resource officers, while I was in the Avondale School District. And with the, it's almost similar to what we have multiple municipalities, that, that combine to bring students to the same school. In a middle school, it's about the jurisdiction of the sheriff's department, and we have a school resource officer from the sheriff's department. The county sheriff's department could have provided that service at our high school, but the high school is in Auburn Hills, and we felt that was best that, that that officer come from the Auburn Hills Police Department. And so, when I made these conversations, I, I really felt like from my experience that it would be best served that the school resource officer at the middle school would come from the Romeo Police Department. Although, today, the school's set outside of the village of Romeo, literally, but I think is a few feet, so, but, you know, learn a lot about the jurisdiction and the things that we can dial in and out, and all that you've been referring on that. Well, then, I have a global pandemic, and we were done with the lead, and the conversation was put aside. Last summer, I, again, you know, decided that that point in time, it just wasn't the right time to take any formal action, simply because of what things were out in the budget cycle for the municipalities. I've had continued discussions to come to a place, while the actual grant, I think, was more amicable for our parties involved. Then I experienced a tragic shooting in a Auburn district, and the level of school safety has changed yet again, but for everybody in Raleigh, and the state of Michigan, way closer to home. So, I'm really engaged in the conversation, because that was the right thing to do, and with the sense of urgency that I think you've heard from some of the constituents tonight, and maybe at prior meetings. I've gained the full support of the Royal Police Department and the Bar Officers Association, and I'm grateful for that. The work on the financial component of the grant has led to concessions on behalf of both the district and the village of Romeo, once again, to make this amicable for all. More recently, we've reached full agreement between the legal council of all entities on this mutual agreement. Just because of schedule of meetings and the sequence of events, you know, our Board of Education and the Board of Trustees have taken action to approve this. So, here tonight, and I certainly will respect the collective decision of this elected body, no matter how the action plays out, because we're still community members, neighbors, and we have to work together, because it's right. However, I have a story, I ask you to consider your full support of the resolution tonight. I also want to make a very clear that Royal College Schools has not received any financial support from a state or federal government, pandemic or otherwise, that would be allowing us to follow this position, or they would have already done it. Those positions, almost all instances, are major guardians with sharp fighting, because that's representative of the false support of the youth in the community, and also the fact that the officer doesn't work for us all year, because of course, we're off, and also, I don't know, our families deserve this, and I'm not sure that you would disagree with that. From what I just saw as a public entity, sometimes we have to do things just simply because it's right to do it, because we are a public entity. There's things that school districts get involved in, that we could argue at times, maybe we don't need to be involved in, but, there's times where we make the decision to do that, because it's right. So, I just respect for our question for support for the jurisdiction of our place, so that this officer can operate under our full authority on the campus, and I should find support out loud in our grant to bring a school resource officer to run a middle school ex-fall, because it's right for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Todd. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak during public comment? Chief?
No, I think it's all of us here.
Like to thank everybody, appreciate all your input. All right, well, let's move on. Item five would be hearings and reviews, which we have none, so we'll move on to item six, unfinished business, we removed from the agenda. Items A and B, so we'll go on to new business, item seven. We eliminated item seven A, for our department code of conduct. So, moving on to item seven B, new hire fulfillment of the township meetings, Susan, I think you've been handling that.
Yeah, I'll just make a motion, and then we can talk. I'd like to make a motion to hire, to approve the hiring of someone to operate our cameras and stream all board meetings at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Support.
So, I've done a little, I've been in touch with some of the high school, they have the exact same equipment that we do here, so there are kids that have been already trained on that, so I've been talking to a couple of them, I'm just trying to find someone, that high school or a student kind of person to operate the cameras for us. So, that's where it stands, still looking, right now, my husband's doing it, I'm thrilled I can...
Thanks Fred.
Thanks Fred, what a great job.
For some reason, it's not streaming live tonight, we thought it was, this was our maiden voyage, and we'd have it up and running, but instead, we're recording, so, sorry folks. Next time around.
Um, we have a motion by Susan, supported by Frank, does anybody, is there any other discussion, you know, the twenty-five dollars per hour, for somebody to film the meetings? You have somebody in mind, Susan?
No, I've been talking to two high school kids, but, kids, they're gonna be on, moving on to college soon, so...
So, who's, somebody's gonna have to, they're gonna be already come pre-trained already, since they're using this equipment to school?
If I can find somebody, yeah, I've been talking to a high school teacher.
Okay, okay, well, if there's no other discussion, we're gonna roll call.
You don't have to restrict it just to high school kids, you know, I mean, you might find someone who's got that skill, might wanna do it.
Oakland here, and, you know, yeah, so, and a couple of kids, I, one of the students I talked to is going to Oakland, so, that would be a nice transition.
Anybody out there listening, are they looking for a job and wanna be in, experienced in the filming business, you know, got a spot, maybe? Okay, can we get a roll call Dana, please?
Hadley?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
George Yell?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, motion passed. Moving on to item seven C, we approved the supervisor stipends at our last meeting, but needs to be broken down, in two different categories, one of them is for the planning commission administrator, and the other one would be for the annual, for the code enforcement officer. Susan, did you have any breakdown on that, what you guys, what was wrong with the wording before?
We, we just lumped them together, so it needs to be in case you decide not to do both at some point, we don't have to visit it, revisit it, so...
So, these...
Five hundred, total.
That was broken down, do you remember the breakdown?
Uh, I don't have it with me.
It's easily broken down to three thousand dollars annually per position. Mike, you're the one that originally started, you know, put this...
I thought it was three hundred or two hundred.
I thought so too.
Was the detail in the minutes?
Yeah.
It wasn't broken down. I can suggest a breakdown if you want.
All right, go for it.
I would say three hundred dollars for ordinance enforcement, two hundred dollars a month for planning and zoning administrator.
Second.
But I would ask Mike if he agrees with that, because he's the one doing the whole...
Fine with that, I mean, it's fine with me, yeah, it works out.
That was your motion, right?
Yeah, that's my motion.
And Susan, second, I'm gonna reset from voting, but I, it's, um, second by Susan, or any other discussion? Can we get a roll call Dana, please?
To George Yell?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Hadley?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Okay, moving on. Item seven D, the spongy moth allocation of funds, obviously, that's been approved already. We did receive an agreement from Al's Aerial Spraying Services for a cost of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents for two hundred and twenty-seven point three acres, at a hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents per acre. I think the question is, is where we're gonna take that funding from, if I'm not mistaken, and I think that's why it's on the agenda for, um, for discussion. Anybody got any suggestions at all?
Can't come out of, um...
ARPA?
ARPA, or the, the filming money that we just saved, we just freed up a hundred thousand.
Have to amend the cable budget.
Right.
I think that second suggestion is a good one.
The cable?
Yeah, we, we have a hundred and some thousand on the cable budget, we don't need that much anymore.
Around a hundred and twelve.
We could move thirty thousand, or twenty-nine, twenty-seven thousand of it...
Is it?
To the spongy moth spray.
Have we, has that been brought up to Rhonda, ready?
I did bring it up to her a couple of weeks, she had, she had, she asked the question, and that's what I, she was unaware that we, um, decided to do our own filming, so, that put a big smile on her face when I told her, so, she was aware.
We did give ourselves two months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyways, the, the cable fees go into our general fund, so actually, we're gonna approve to have the twenty-seven, four, twenty-eight point two-nine paid for out of our general fund, using ARPA, are using cable fees, and is what it would be, but, I don't think we can, it's how...
It's a budget amendment where you adjust the budget for both of those categories.
So, and the cable budget.
So, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents to Al's Aerial Spraying to be taken, funding from, used from our general fund, for spraying the gypsy, our spongy moth.
From the general fund, or are you making a motion to take it from our media budget?
I don't know, can we actually itemize that down, the media budget's supposed to...
Your budget amendments, you have to approve that.
You can amend it.
But it, I think that the, I thought that the wording in the past was that the media funding has to go into the general fund.
It is in the general.
Yeah, so we're just gonna move from the cable budget.
It's from that line item.
You, you just did a budget amendment, you're moving it from the cable budget to the gypsy, to a new bucket called gypsy moth.
But the money, the funding for the spraying's gonna come out of the general fund, though still, correct?
But...
Everything comes out of the general fund.
All that other money's accounted for, so this way, we just have a little extra.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you want me to change it?
I do believe next year, we need to go after the state, or start right away, I think they should pay for it.
Yeah, the line.
You're right, right?
So, this is, a lot of times, these are, these, these insects are like in cycles, and this is, should be the tail end of the cycle, we're hoping.
Whether it's in cycles or not, I believe the state should pay for it, I mean, townships, like us, are struggling financially, and we need to, they need to take that into consideration, if not the state, then the county.
Right.
So, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, did you get it?
Anybody second it?
Like my motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Mike.
Second by Mike. You gotta capture, you know, Dana probably knows more about it than.
Yeah, she knows the wording on it, sure. Any other discussion? Whenever you get it ready, Dana, you can do a roll call, please.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
No.
Dudley?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on. Item seventy, the intergovernmental agreement for the school resource officer. So this is actually, there's two parts to this. One of them, we've already approved to have our attorney work with Village Romeo's attorney, and then also to work with the school's attorney to come up with an intergovernmental agreement, which gives Romeo, Village Romeo's police department jurisdiction at the middle school for, I guess, powers to do whatever they do in regards to the police desk. I know you worded a lot differently, Chief. Then the second part of it is the funding, which the funding part of it did come in front of the board once before, and it was voted down by a vote of three to two. We're looking at the funding again, with a shared cost of sixty percent. To the schools, thirty percent of the cost would be to the Village Romeo, and ten percent of the cost would be to Bruce Township. And it's broken down, per Chief's Okonickies sheet here, for the year 2022, it would be five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars for Bruce Township, seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars for the Village Romeo, and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and four dollars for the school system, and then it's amortized over a period of, from 2022, 2023, 2024, 2025. So you get a breakdown what it's gonna cost the township over the next four years. Chief, thanks for putting that together. It's very nice. This 2022 is, since, is this gonna be for the 2023 then? Is that what we'd be looking to approve? Because obviously, the 2022 season is over, or is that?
Well, it's 2022 to slash 2023, so next year, next school year.
So do we go up the, the figure for 2023 is sixty-two eighty-two?
It would be the, 2022 would be next school year.
Okay.
It's September.
So we're looking to approve five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents along with the intergovernmental agreement on the jurisdictional powers of the Village Romeo Police Department?
That's correct.
And then, and this contract currently is for one year, so this will get us through till, if it's approved now, it'll get us through the end of the 2023 school season, and.
Till July, or June of 2023.
Right, yeah, we don't have a date when it's entered, so, okay. I know we've spoke, had some of the people from the community, obviously, have spoke in regards to how they feel about it. We did receive another letter from another resident, that she can't be here, but her name was Rachel Ichorst. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly, but just let it be known that we did receive her email, and thank you for doing that. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the intergovernmental agreement. One more thing, so the intergovernmental agreement was prepared by the three attorneys, and they did come up with the proper wording. It did go back and forth for quite a while, and then this is the agreement that they did finally decide was a perfectly drawn up agreement that's agreed on between three attorneys, and that's pretty hard to do if anybody's had to do this. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion and approve the intergovernmental agreement as presented for the school resource officer for a period of one year from the year 2022 to the end of school year 2023.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Tremblay. Is there any other discussion?
I have some questions for clarifications, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Any compensation, it says prior to the execution of the agreement, the village shall provide the school and the township with a not to exceed cost of the SRO. Do you have that?
The, the township, no, I mean.
The middle sentence in the compensation section, prior to the execution of the agreement, the village shall provide the school and the township with a not to exceed cost of the SRO.
That's the sheet that I gave you. That's what I added, you know.
But this didn't come from the village, right?
Yeah, that's from Chief.
Came from the chief.
There's a not to exceed amount.
Those are the costs that are associated with our collective bargaining agreement, which, under which this officer would be employed. So that would be the pay scale and the cost of the benefits that would.
So I have a very simple question. What is the not to exceed amount? Just give me a dollar amount.
Fifty-eight seventeen thirty-seven?
The amount is written, written on that, on that.
Is it the twenty-two amount, the twenty-three amount, or what?
Depends on which year.
Which year, yeah.
First year.
Is it calendar year or fiscal year?
September 2022, correct?
Correct, September to June.
September twenty-two to June twenty-three, September twenty-three, would be sixty-two eighty-two eighty-six.
So fifty-one seventy-three is a not to exceed?
That is the first year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You can add that to the motion, because I did state the fifty.
Can we amend it to not to exceed eight thousand annually? That gives us a little bit of leeway without going over. Amend paragraph, amend paragraph five compensation to.
Actually, what we have, what we have is, with, we have the SRO, then, one, not to exceed it fifty-eight one seventy-three, or fifty-eight seventeen.
So it will not exceed each year here. That last bracket, you see.
Yeah, so we would do ten percent of the, of the SRO.
Okay, we're gonna go, we're gonna do ten percent. It's not defined to me, so.
Sure enough, we're gonna attempt to verify that we are in compliance with the insurance requirement. Three million dollars.
There was talk about the insurance. Christine, do you remember any of the discussion that we had about the insurance part of it?
I've sent that contract to my insurance company, and they made some changes which were incorporated into this last draft of the contract. I don't know that Bruce Township did that exercise or not, but it's reflective of what our carrier was demanded, which was to subjugate and then be removed, and we're not doing that in our policy.
You had that done after you guys approved it, is that, so you just recently did that?
No, I did it in advance of taking it to my board, so that they could, you know, when I asked legal counsel to review it, and it was Mark suggested that we just run it past our insurance period, just in case there was something in there that they had some concerns about, so. I uploaded it to our representative there.
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, we, we can get that sent right to insurance. I don't have an answer for you on that, then.
Well, I think we, we need to amend the motion, then.
Subject to verification of that.
And do you have a question for the superintendent, if you don't mind? My question is that you have contracted with a security monitoring team to complement the liaison officers at the high school, the middle school, and the academy?
It's student supervision.
Student supervision, okay. I think that's a good, good move, too. And I'd just like to comment that the sharing of costs between school districts and municipalities is not uncommon in this area with other schools who have done the liaison officers, and I'm sure Mr. Robinson can vote for that at Avondale.
I have a question, Mr. Robinson. Have they installed cameras in the schools, so that way, if something were to happen, there's a live feed going to the Macomb County Sheriff's or Road Commission? I know there was talk about that at one time.
Yeah, we, we control the network and the surveillance, but the, since the command center, we're getting access, so they need.
Okay, all right.
They don't, they don't, they don't stay up night, right?
Okay.
Up in the school hallways.
Right, right.
You got bigger fish to fry.
Yeah. No, I just, yeah, in the event something were to happen, God forbid, right, okay.
I could vote that the, the team that they've hired to monitor students, they monitor cameras all day long, while they're at the school.
So this issue's come at us quite a few times, and what I'm about to say is, may not reflect the way I'm gonna vote, but because it's come at us a million times, I'm, start second guessing what we should do. But I'm still of the opinion that this is, again, another state issue, because our taxpayers, including myself, we pay astronomical amount of taxes to the schools, and, so I feel it should be an expense of the state myself. But, I wanna say I disagree with a few of the comments that are out there, and you know, as a township, our fiscal, we're trying to be very fiscal responsible, because I said it a couple of months ago, that we need to start making some tough decisions. We're struggling, we're barely making it, I'm gonna be honest. And we have, we're fighting for some infrastructure right now, so that, we're not fighting, but we're requesting for some infrastructure right now. So anyway, we can grow a little bit and start making some extra money with taxes and, you know, tax base. So, that's all I wanted to say.
I'd just add one thing, that there are four school districts that I know in the area that deploy liaison officers, and they use a model similar to the funding mechanism with municipalities and school districts sharing in the funding of those. And that's Rochester, Royal Oak, Avondale, and Lake Orion. So we would be a fifth that I would know that would share, so it's not an uncommon way of funding that.
And we have two other school districts in our community, so we could expect to hear from them, too. Let's re-do it this way.
Any other discussion? I need to amend my motion, too. If you can just add to, um, contingent upon approval through our insurance company, cover three million dollar per occurrence policy. Meaning is our insurance.
Mike did. Mike did. I second it, yeah. I'm okay with the amendment, yeah. We have to verify that, otherwise, we breach.
Totally, no, I agree. Three million's probably more than we have covered right now, so. Is there any other, no more discussion? Can we get a roll call? Dana, please.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Bumpley?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Appreciate all the hard work everybody's put in, the residents, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to serving.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on. Dr. Robinson, thanks again for coming on. Christine, thanks.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Let's get this thing out again.
Okay, moving on to item seven G, the Facebook page.
Oh, oh, it's animal control.
Don't wanna forget about that. I just seen everybody's awake still. Item seven F, the animal control ordinance.
Really, yeah, Mike?
It is really, we got it, we got a good one. So needless to say, I talked to Chief Randazzo this today, and he has reworded the cover sheet on it. It doesn't say animal control, it says animal control best practices, I guess, now, and it softens it up a little bit. And it's pretty much all the same wording, it's a few changes in, it's like in the front glossary or something, and, but everything else is pretty much the same. But, we have heard from our residents in our community, we did receive another email today from Debbie Martone, which is in favor of us looking at the possibility of approving the animal control best practices ordinance. So what this is kinda doing, and it's kinda confusing in a way, and the reason why we're looking at this, and I had the chief kinda try to explain it to me, was, it's similar to our code violations we have in our building department, our codes. We also have adopted the State of Michigan codes, where we can also not only use our codes, but we can fall back on the State of Michigan's codes. It's similar to the same thing that's going on here with the Macomb County Animal Control. If you look at our, our current ordinance that we have, it's like seven pages, nine with the signature pages, and if you look like it's something like the vicious dog, it's a very short, or dangerous animal, or whatever, it's a very short section, which doesn't give us a lot of control, a lot of powers as far as enforcement, especially with the Macomb County Animal Control. So we do have issues in our community. I think you've heard some of our residents have been speaking, and they're kind of blue in the face. They call animal control, they're, they're getting no response because of the ordinances that we have in place. We're not trying to have an animal control officer patrol the neighborhoods and look for every violation, they're not, they're not gonna do that. They just need to be able to act when the time comes, and be able to enforce what we have, so. I did reach out to, let's see if I can find it. I wanna reach out to a couple, I did speak with our township attorney, she's actually in the process of reviewing the same ordinance with Armada. She's also, our township attorney's also Armada's attorney. I did speak, I wanted just to somebody like Shelby Township, so I called Shelby Township Supervisor. They have adopted Macomb County animal best practices, and, and I've spoke with both Rick Stank, Stathicus, and then also Bob Heath, which is the township attorney, and since they've adopted it, they've had no problems, and have been very favorable for the township, so I got nothing but the, the thumbs up from them. Our attorney basically stated that Chief Randazzo knows his, knows his business, and he's very passionate about what he does, and he would not, he would not try to steer us down the wrong path, so she felt pretty confident in what he's putting, presented in front of us, so. We've heard from the residents, and I would make a motion to go ahead and adopt the animal control best practices into our current ordinances as presented, so.
Second.
Second by DiGiorgio.
Christine said that she's still working with Armada on it, she's.
Yeah, they have, they, they've got, they put together a committee, even though it's been, it's basically gonna be worked on being adopted by all the communities in Macomb County as much as, the other ones that don't have, some of them have animal control themselves.
So should we, we be waiting until she gives it the thumbs up, and is our attorney, if she's still questioning it?
Well, she didn't have anything negative to say about it, and then I talked to Shelby Township Attorney, you know, and then this is all drawn up by an attorney, you know, by, you know, legal, if you looked at it all, it's done very well. But I mean, if you feel comfortable waiting on it, I mean, I'm feel.
I was curious, I didn't know what she, what your conversation was like, if she has some reservations.
Again, like she said, that Chief Randazzo's very passionate about, he knows his business, and he's very passionate about what he does, and she would not, you know, he would not steer us down the wrong road, so. And like I said, they're currently looking at it, maybe adopting it in the future with Armada. And then Mike reached out to the Shelby Township Attorney, and also the supervisor there, and it's been nothing but favorable. They've had a lot of issues prior to this, with dog bites and things like that, and this has helped them out a lot, so. Any other questions?
I had a couple of questions, Mike.
We gotta wait because we're in the middle of a motion, you know, so.
It seems like most of these issues are a result of one situation where we had with dog. Is that primarily why, why this is brought up?
Well, again, we're, it's not some, we can't.
You know, all the, all the, all the issues here, I think, resulted from that one piece of property where they've got animals that are rescued and they're straying off.
I think they're trying to make uniform in the, in the.
I'm just wondering what prompted this? Is this what prompted it?
Well, there's other instances. We have a dog bite that was in the area, so we do have a danger.
There's other things, too.
There was a wild monkey that was brought into the community not too long ago, that was brought in from Sterling Heights as animal control. And again, our ordinances are kind of vague on, and we actually, I had to have Sterling Heights come back and get that dangerous animal and remove it from our community, because technically, one community's not allowed to bring a dangerous animal into another community and drop it off. And that was what was done, it was dropped off at the same rescue facility, but even so, but this is just, so there's other instances, we just can't point the finger at just the one particular, but it is the number one.
So that one organization today that's creating some, some issues with some of our surrounding neighbors, how are they regulated today?
Well, they're, they're regulated through the State of Michigan, but the problem is, is that the State of Michigan, there's a lot of, she's right now in the middle of a court battle with her state, with her licensing, and from some of the issues that have been going on, and, I mean, I, again, she's not here, and it's not on the agenda, and I don't think we should really be discussing what's going on.
Well, I didn't wanna talk about, I just wanna know how is it regulated today? And you're saying the state regulates it? And it sounds like she's had some issues with the state.
It is a state license, and we had to prove it here to have a rehab facility, and it was approved by our previous administration, and she was able to open it up here in our community.
No, I heard from the public today that the 2015 ordinance change kinda opened up this problem.
Right.
I would suggest that if we do move forward this, that our attorney review that 2015 ordinance, and make sure we don't have a conflict from what we adopt versus what's already on the book, that it gets reconciled, so we have one set, one set of ordinances that, that regulates this. And if we do adopt this, who enforces it?
So that would be enforced by both animal control and Township's ordinance officer.
And then another question, will it fix the issue that we have right now with the residents that are?
Definitely gonna help to enforce some of the issues we have going on, you know, not be able to release animal, you know, the recent, leasing of animals, and it should be done, you know, in a proper manner, and there's, there's areas in there that's definitely gonna help.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna adopt an ordinance that's supposed to fix it, then it should help fix the problem.
Yeah, that's the whole purpose of it, primarily.
Is there a cost to Bruce Township to adopt this?
No.
Okay.
There may be some costs in regard in prosecution cost, our, you know, attorney fee.
No matter what, no matter what. Okay, thank you. Those are two more questions.
This is our current ordinance, it was done in 2015. I haven't looked at, like I said, it's only nine, it's nine pages, two of them which are the signature pages. So we'll get a.
But it sounds like the changes to that.
It's very.
Create the problem.
Yeah. Like I said, it's very vague. It's kind of like I was saying regarding our building code ordinances is the same thing. We still have the state code violations that we can follow.
I think the main point is to have the attorney make sure that whatever happens, there's not a conflict between that ordinance and whatever we adopt here today, if we do.
Yeah. So you want me to change that motion?
No, I think that's just an action item to take. Is that, as part, if we do adopt the motion, that we have the attorney review our current ordinance and make sure there's not a conflict, or if there is, that it gets reconciled, so that we don't have an issue going forward.
So then, okay, I'll, I'll have them look at, but the fact of the matter, I mean, we still have our current ordinance, our current ordinance, and on top of it, we're gonna.
It sounds like your current ordinance is lacking.
It lacks in a lot of areas. It's done very basic. I mean, we live in a rural community, there's no doubt about it. But we do have some issues with, we don't want any more rehab facilities opening up in a residential neighborhood, I guess is what it boils down. They need a little more area, a little bit more land possibly. Then, then there's issues that the rehab facility needs to be operated and ran like it should be, according to state guidelines, I think. And again, that's a whole different subject, it's not something that we should even discuss in at tonight's meeting, just basically on ordinance that we're looking to adopt in regards to what we have currently and what we want to have for our future. Do you have any other questions, Dana?
No.
If you want, we can have Chief Randazzo come back and answer any questions you might have, and we can get some wording from the attorney if you feel more, a little more comfortable.
However we end up, I just don't want to have the same issues. In other words, I think we're trying to do is, is create an ordinance that has more teeth, and that is enforced, and Macomb County can help enforce it, because it sounds like the state hasn't been moving fast enough, and is creating some nuisances for some of our neighbors in the area.
Right.
Which is, we're trying to fix that.
So the issue is, is yeah, we want something that's going to have a little bit more teeth, but we don't want to be too aggressive to the average law-abiding citizens. And like I said, I don't think that the animal control is going to drive around looking for issues. But yeah, it's gonna, it's a little more stricter, obviously, than what we currently have.
Move forward, and they don't have to look very far for this one.
Okay. There's no, so the motion was seconded by you, Mike?
Yes.
So any other discussion? If not, can we get a roll call? Dana, please.
Bumple?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Silbrook?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. I think still here. Thanks. Did you have a question, Erin?
Dana?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want you guys to call the balance or anything. I just wanted to say regarding the animal control office ordinance, I promise I won't say anything else about whatever.
Okay, thank you.
But the animal control office ordinance is really good, Jeff. It's, Mr., Chief Randazzo is the best. Before I got into wildlife, I was an animal control officer. I was a cruelty investigator out of Detroit and Pontiac. I'm also a court-appointed expert in animal cruelty and dog fighting. So if this ordinance, regardless of whether it's aimed towards one facility or not, it's wrote in such a way that we have so many people from the city moving into the country areas, that especially like dog fighters, you know, they're going to come up into your area, and they're going to set up places for their dogfighting dogs. So as your ordinance stands now, that would never have addressed it, because you guys aren't used to it. So it's better to adopt a very solid ordinance and have it on record, be proactive before there's a problem, and you can't reach back and enforce a new law on these people. You know, and it's gonna be the same thing with these crazy exotic animals, like several cats that the lady had in Royal Oak. It's insane. So it's better to be really proactive, you know, and officers have discretion. They're not going to start harassing people over silly things. You know, we've got better things to do with our time when we're off the service.
Right.
So it's just really good to, you know, be prepared for the worst. If it never happens, great, but it's better to be prepared. The facility, as far as wildlife, the state dropped the ball. Their laws aren't very good, but they are changing them. We've had group meetings with the state and our regulators to start changing the wildlife laws. So, you know, while you guys may adopt this, they're gonna adopt new stuff. So it's all a work in process. So I just want to tell you, there is an advantage to your ordinance, to be preventative in other situations.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming out tonight, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, our motion passed.
Can I just make a, ask a question? We talked about the resource officer, but we didn't talk about where the money's coming from. I wonder if you want to do the cable fund, or get a cable budget again, pull from that. I mean, I know Ron's just gonna be like.
General fund. I mean, it's all, one way, it's all channeled in, a general fund, right? Media funds for the, but that's actually not going to go into effect, and so, I mean, we're done with this year.
It'll start in, it'll start in September.
Is that when it starts, September?
It'll be.
Yeah, it's too late for the school.
So I'll make a motion to amend the cable budget to pay for the school resource officer.
To the two fifty-eight seventeen, or whatever it is.
I'll second that motion.
Fifty-eight seventeen thirty-seven.
I mean, we want to, I don't know, we want to keep getting away cable money if it doesn't work out, and we may have to go back.
Well.
That's what they call a budget amendment, you can always redo the budget amendment.
Well, since we're not streaming, I hope that was not a problem.
Okay. All right. So did you, did you get, what's she, okay, all right, sounds good. Do we need to make a vote on that? Do we need a second? I think we do.
Mike, second.
Mike, any other discussion? Let me get that roll call, Dana, please.
Silbrook?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Bumple?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item seven G, Facebook page approval.
Yeah, so I make a motion to accept a Facebook page, an official Bruce Township Facebook page that we do not have. And it will be called the Bruce Township, Macomb County. The reason for doing it's going to be, you know, for us to be a low marketing cost strategy, a low-cost marketing strategy. We can share information in the newsletter about Bruce Township and all the other business that we have going on. We can share pictures and videos from our township events, as well as our area businesses. We can talk to existing and potential customers through that, like builders, developers. And we can provide customer support by them having our phone number and our website, and also posting important information on it as it comes up. And also raise brand awareness and try to promote a positive word of mouth with Bruce Township. I think that's something that we need to do, and we need to start branding ourselves, and highlighting all the good things that happen in this community, and all the good things that are, that we can do. So, that's it. So I make a motion for the board to adopt this Facebook page.
Second.
Second by Susan. Discussion?
So you, you're the administrator, then?
I am, but I could add, you know, co-administrators or whatever.
And so what, what can people actually do on it? Is it just a place where?
It's just gonna be a place for us to post. I'm not, I, I've, I'm blocking comments, because I don't want, I don't want to run into that trap where somebody's saying something negative about this person, and next thing you know, they're saying, you know, it's just a back-and-forth war. So it's just gonna be a place where people can, you know, we're gonna post pictures, informational stuff, and post pictures of the fire department and the great job that they do. Might post some information about some of the things we've, you know, adopted tonight. Gonna highlight businesses in the area if they got specials going on, and post a picture of their restaurant, or grocery store, or whatever, just to spread the word.
Don't, don't we have a current Facebook page by the fire department?
Fire department, yes.
That's not Bruce Township.
No, we have Bruce Township Fire Department, so. But it would be nice to share it across both platforms, you know, like if we had pictures, it'd be great to send to you with some language to put on there, if you're the administrator.
Yeah.
Isn't the same thing that we're, isn't this kind of like what our website's used for, though? It's the same?
I'm just, we have a website, right, but not everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Could you link?
Thank you.
This is just Facebook.
You can have links to.
Yeah, and on the Facebook page, I think we have a link to our website. We can put our newsletter on it. Like when we come out with our newsletter, we can put it on there every, you know, every week or something.
Think what it is, Mike, it just reaches more people.
Right. Because what, because what happens is, once you send it to somebody, then somebody sends it to two or three, and those two or three, it just keeps growing.
So then you can't really post anything on our site? Anybody in the community technically can't post anything, right?
Only the administrator.
Right, we can just, we have control of it, of what we post.
And they can't comment on it?
They can try if they're, and then you just would block them if it's something you didn't like, is that an option? Or you're just not letting anybody post? You're smiling.
Yeah, they asked that question.
Sorry.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody can post things. I don't, I don't think they can. I mean, no, because it's, we're the administrators.
You know, offense, I see some of the Facebook pages, and I see township officials that are on there twenty-four hours a day, like seven days a week. It's like, how are they even working, when they can post every, seems like every minute? And if you post something, they're right there. It's like, how are they focusing on their daily activities? It seems like they're on it.
Yeah, it doesn't take much to post something. You just hit the share button, it's gone.
Saying commenting and everything else.
Oh, yeah, well, that's why, that's, that's why I'm not allowing commenting.
But how much time is it going to utilize a year, you know?
Ten minutes. I do it on my own Facebook page now, and I spend five, ten minutes in the morning while I'm having my coffee, and then I spend another five or ten minutes at night, watching TV.
So there's only some Bruce Township websites out there?
Those are, those are administered by someone else, that is not affiliated with Bruce Township.
And how would we determine the content of our Facebook page?
Yeah, like I said, I just want to use Bruce Township material.
But how, who determines what goes out there?
Administrator.
The administrators, yeah.
So you have sole control?
No.
And an assistant.
I can add you guys on it if you want.
The reason I ask is because I know there's other community websites, and there's some consternation within the office, because one person controls it, and it's a narrative that may be not consistent with the, with the whole board or the whole community. And I'm just, I don't think you would do that, Frank, but you may not be in that chair forever.
Right. No, I know what you mean.
So that's, that's a concern I have.
No, my, my motive behind this is to share our information, share our newsletters, share good stories about Bruce Township. I mean, if you see my Facebook page, that's all it is. I advertise the restaurants in Fiddler Cove and Times Square, La Fonda's, various other restaurants, Bluebird. I'll put stuff about the fire department when they post something.
Is there a cost to this?
No. There'll only, there'll only be a cost if you boost a page, if you boost something to get more people to see it.
So if, if Bruce Township, our government wants to control the narrative, then the administrator has to have sole control, or you can't have people coming in from outside the community bashing.
Right.
Which happens on some of these other Bruce Township websites.
That's why we're not allowing any of that.
Okay.
Just for informational purposes, they can just post, and if they want to call us, they can call us on the phone number that's there. If they want to go to our website, there's a link to our website. And my email's on there, if somebody wants to email me a question.
Can we do a trial run?
Yeah.
And then maybe do a, go back after some certain amount of time and see, is this working the way we think it is?
Okay, yeah.
Did you raise your hand trees?
Nope.
So I amend my motion. I make a motion for the board to accept this Facebook page for a one-month trial basis.
I was gonna go longer.
How long?
Three or six or something.
Okay, three or six months, six months, right.
Yeah. Chief, you'll work with the chief, guys piggyback some of the stuff then, I guess.
You don't have to recreate the wheel, right?
No. It's not, when I see him post something, I just share it, I don't even have.
He took all his pictures tonight, too, they'll probably.
Right. Those pictures I took tonight are gonna go up.
And can you add something to that motion, that you, we'll be solely administered and will not allow for outside bashing of the township?
Township board.
I don't think for political reasons either. I think it's got to be good things, I think it can be used for any political motivations or anything.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm concerned about.
I know, I know, I get it.
Two administrators, though, too, right, Frank?
Yeah, yeah, we can have another administrator.
Just because if you're not here, you're not around.
Who wants to be the other one, two, three? We could have four, all five people if you want.
No, thanks.
I think we should have two, but the other one is not here to say yes.
Yeah.
We volunteer, Lisa.
We do, we have two.
All right. She's not here, so she.
That doesn't have to be a board member either necessarily, could be a person in the office.
So, okay, I amend my motion to the board to accept this Facebook page for a trial run of six months, and also include Lisa Crafty as the other administrator, if she so chooses.
That's good.
She doesn't want to do it, I'll.
Okay.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
I agree, yeah.
Huh?
I had already just seconded.
Oh, okay. Got two seconds on there. Can we get a roll call, Dana, please?
Bumple?
Yes.
Silbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Look on the back, you'll see the pictures of what's on there, the back page of that.
The front, the top picture looks like the one that's currently out there, though, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't it, or no?
I don't know, but can you have any suggestions about changing this around, just send it to me?
Okay. Looking forward to it. All right, moving on, item seven H, the fire department, ARPA funds weight equipment. Chief, did you want, I know you've been, did you, you got the packet?
Yeah, yeah, I got the packet. Is this, is this the one I had given to you prior, or is this a different one?
This looks newer.
Yeah, this is.
I just know that when, when we first started our ARPA meetings, I had a crew put together a package, and it was ten thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars, but it was almost exactly the same as this. I'm just not sure if this is the original one.
I think it's the updated.
Updated.
Been updated, and the prices have gone up, is what's happened.
But is this the same equipment? Because the descriptions of the equipment look a little bit different, because I tried to look at the old one.
I don't have the old one, I think I might have left it, Frank.
So.
I got the old one.
Going through my ARPA folder, and I think I might have left it, but I had the incidentals that they were asking for, like some foam mats, like yoga mats for stretching, and some assist bands.
Yeah.
Wasn't it the first one?
No.
It includes approximately four hundred additional for miscellaneous tiny items.
Yeah, there's a list of miscellaneous items, but, so Lieutenant Nakas kind of took this, you know.
This is the system he has at home.
Well, exactly. Back when you guys were originally talking about it, it was thirty-five hundred dollars per unit or something, plus the extras that you could have gotten. And I don't think that the township approved to have it purchased at the time, and he ended buying one for himself.
He did.
Yeah, so he's got one at home, and he's very happy with it. And I said, the only way, I said, it would be nice if everybody in the union would be agreement on what you're looking at. That way we don't get somebody that says, oh, I didn't approve it, or I didn't want that, or. Supposedly, the last conversation that I had with Lieutenant was, everybody was fully aware of what we're getting, and is all one hundred percent compliant with the approval of it. So that's all. the approval of it. So that's all...
And, and I think it is a high priority, because when I sent out the, uh, request list to the department, this came back, weight equipment came back on everybody's request for ARPA funds, so...
I think it's a great...
And I think it's good, the paid-on call can use it as well, so.
Right.
It's not just for the fifteen full-timers.
Yeah, so I don't know if the full-timers actually went to the paid-on call to get their approval, but I know that the pay, the full-timers, the IFF did approve this unanimously, from what I understand.
It's wonderful, I, I'm glad they're...
I mean, no, I mean, it's finally gonna, you've been working on it, I know the department guys have been working on it. I think it's great, and, um, we have, this is a perfect example of what our ARPA funds could be used for, so...
Make a motion to use ARPA money to pay for the, um, equipment as presented.
Well, it's two, yeah, it's two pieces of equipment.
Two pieces, one for each station.
Yeah, but all the equipment.
We need to list the model number and all, anything in the amount.
Equipment in the sentence.
As presented.
Twelve thousand, six hundred and...
As presented, so...
Yeah, I think...
As presented, there's eleven thousand, two oh four, right?
Twelve thousand, six hundred and forty.
Well, it says it's good through six one, so...
Yeah.
Where do we get the twelve thousand?
The back page of the first page.
Oh, the back page?
Oh, the first page.
Oh, I see.
Second page of the...
Oh, that, there's fourteen hundred dollars.
Printing on both sides, trying to save money on paper.
Some of that, some of that may get lost. We did get some bands and some other things.
Yeah.
The incidentals, we, we were able to pick on, because we do, you know, physical fitness testing monthly, and some of the people were using assist bands for some of them.
So is this far consistent with what was presented when we were talking about ARPA funds?
Hundred percent.
Okay, so the ten thousand, two ninety-seven, and this twelve thousand is essentially the same gear?
That everybody's pretty happy with.
Okay, thank you.
Keep in mind that part of the contract that the IFF has, that they have to work out, is it one hour a day, what you guys have?
One hour.
Managed it that they need to work out one hour a day?
It's not necessarily a hundred percent just working out, it's stretching.
Right.
Some weightlifting, some treadmill.
Exercise.
Cool down, so...
Mm-hmm, I think that's...
Whether it's a half hour or so, but, and then, um, they just get tested monthly on physical fit, firefighter, physical fitness standards.
I think we should do that for the policy for the board, one hour a day. CEO over at Station Two, you know, or Station Three.
And we used to have a lot more equipment, because, um, uh, people brought their own personal equipment in, cause it didn't fit in their basements or homes, but, like, Josh took some of his equipment out of Station Three, and Tom Karen moved it to his home, and took some equipment out of, out of Station Two, so we kinda lost equipment over the last couple of years. We have some, but we need to get back.
It is in the bays over at Station Two, right? I mean, it is, I mean, I guess if any of the board members wanted to go up there and work out, that'd be...
State police do once in a while, stage their lunch break, and, as I shouldn't be saying.
My knee gets better.
Okay, I think we had a motion by Susan, you seconded it? Frank made the motion?
No, she made it, I seconded.
Okay, um, can we get a roll call Dana, please?
Bellbrook?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief, and thanks to the fire department and all involved in that, appreciate it. Thanks Lieutenant Nakkis. So moving on, I can find my agenda.
OPEB.
OPEB plan.
Can I make a motion to accept the OPEB report, as prepared and presented by Wat Watkins Ross? This is a...
Support.
...all forward reports.
For the fiscal year ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So just to accept the report, there's no discussion on any, anything else?
Um, so Susan made the motion, supported by, Mike, did you support it?
Frank.
Frank?
Any discussion? And the question did come up, just regarding why there was a difference in price of what they had figured, and I know I asked that question, but it was, and then I think Ron asked, but just inflation, salary increases, investment rate of return, twenty-year municipal bond rates, and so on and so forth, et cetera. It's a reason why the tip wasn't exactly, but that can change for the other direction next year, so that's what the fluctuation is. Hopefully it will, though. Um, okay, can we get a roll call Dana, please?
Hundley?
Yes.
Bellbrook?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
What does that say, for post-employment benefits?
Operation...
Other post-employment benefits, so retiree benefits.
Used to be nine and a half million, so it's a lot less now, so... Okay, moving on to, um, item seven J, the waive conflict of interest for parks and recreation.
Actually, the, the item should be to approve the township attorney to review the resulting bylaws. That Gary, so I have some good news first, before I make, before I make a motion. Uh, Gary Cop and I met over the last month on the bylaws. He was appointed by Washington, I was appointed by Bruce, and we have come to an agreement between the two of us, which I, we believe is something that both townships can live with. I think you guys, both townships would be pleasantly surprised, um, of where we're at, but we're not showing anything yet. Uh, we wanted to get a legal review, an attorney review, and, um, so Gary had reached out to Seaver, who's our attorney and their attorney, and he had two concerns. Uh, one is, he's not gonna review whether this makes it, um, a viable entity, because we already had attorney, two attorneys already doing that, but he'll review the language just to make sure that it's something that's enforceable or, or doable. And the second thing he wanted us to do is to waive the conflict of interest, cause he's representing two townships who have had, uh, some conflict with this particular topic over time. Uh, and Washington Township has already approved that, and so I'm looking for us to approve this, the spending, split the costs with Washington to have him do this review. And then, once that review is done, and Gary, myself, and the attorney are all good, then we'll put it to the boards for approval. So, just basically split the costs, waive the conflict of interest.
Good.
A motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Appreciate you guys, seconded by Susan.
Yeah.
So appreciate you guys doing your...
We had some very frank discussions, very open discussions, um, on how we felt on certain issues, explained our position, so... I think it worked really good.
I think that Washington, have they approved it already, or no?
They have approved the spending of the county.
They're looking for it.
Waiting for us, and then, once we approve, I'll call Gary, and Gary and I work with the attorney.
They're waiting for us to approve it, and then Washington's gonna approve it?
Washington has already approved the spending.
Okay.
Yeah, they need twice a month.
Yeah, but they've approved, uh, um, the, the waive the conflict interest and to share the cost.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, um, can we get a roll call, please?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Bellbrook?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
We added, um, the sale of the vehicles to item seven, uh, L. Uh, we did have two municipal vehicles that we did sell. Did, Chief, did you wanna, those were both your vehicles, so, did you have information? I thought we had a packet on it. It was on here before, wasn't it? Or something on the sale of the vehicles, I got...
I just gave him the language of a municipal sale.
So we had, um, I got some wording on it, Chief, if you want.
So we just have to make a motion to, uh, to the sale?
Well, we need to say what they were, I mean, two thousand and thirteen Ford Suburban, I mean Chevy Suburban.
Right, two thousand and thirteen Chevy Suburban and a two thousand and seven Chevy Suburban. They were both put out, one was put out for ten days, they were both put out for ten days, minimum sealed bid requirements. On the last day, um, we didn't meet the minimum bid on the two thousand and seven, but we did for the two thousand and thirteen, which was over the minimum bid, so, uh, the gentleman's gonna be taking possession of that vehicle tomorrow. So we re-put the two thousand and seven out front with a lower starting bid, sealed bid, and, um, we closed it, we closed it Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday at two o'clock.
Tuesday, two o'clock, we opened them at three, it's a decent amount above the minimum asking price that we lowered it to the second time, so technically, they're both sold. The combined total was just over twenty-four thousand for the two.
Was it in line with what we expected to get?
It was.
Do we have to mention the amount, or, um, who bought them, at all, get numbers or anything? Okay, so, um, I'll make the motion to go ahead and prove the sale of the, uh, Bruce Township vehicles, as the chief stated.
Right.
Seconded by Frank. If nobody else has any other discussion, can we get a roll call?
Pratt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Bellbrook?
Yes. So, um, that's, um, that's it. So we have closed session, but can we do communications before the closed session?
Yeah.
That way anybody wants to go home.
And Bruce can go home.
Cause there's no ruling after our closed session, it's just basically for, are you out of time?
No, no.
No, not yet, not yet.
Yeah. He's ready to go.
Well, change our schedule so you can get out earlier.
So we're gonna do communications, so if anybody has any communications that they wanna share?
They should be.
No, it'd be the time.
Yeah, I got it. Uh, on Wednesday, July sixth, we're gonna have another blood drive here at, um, Township Hall. It's gonna be on Wednesday, July sixth, from nine thirty to three thirty. This is probably, I think, the fifth or sixth one we've had since we've been in office, and they've been very successful, and they keep getting bigger, so...
Red Cross?
Yes, Red Cross is coming again. Last ti, last time we had, I think, forty people that, uh, donated, and, uh, it was, um, standing room only when you got here. If you didn't make your appointment, you had to wait in line for the blood to be drawn. Also, um... Oh, um, also the cemeteries, um, we have, uh, historical cemeteries in Bruce Township, and they've been around since the late seventeen hundreds and early eighteen hundreds, uh, making them over two hundred years old. So they need to be properly maintained and preserved in a respectful manner. So in an effort to ensure an environment that is neat, respectful, uniform, and able to be maintained, um, as of today, Wednesday, May eighteenth, signs were, uh, with the established cemetery rules, uh, have been posted in all, um, of the some Bruce Township cemeteries. Uh, beginning tomorrow, Thursday, May nineteenth, the township will, uh, start publicizing by website, newsletter, social media, and placing ads in the McComb Daily, requesting the removal of the prohibited items by Friday, July eighth, two, twenty twenty-two. After Saturday, July ninth, the prohibited items will be removed and consolidated in, uh, an identified area of the cemetery for ninety days to be picked up after, to be picked up, but after Friday, October seventh, the remaining items will be disposed of. Uh, I just wanna say thank you, uh, for cooperating in this delicate issue, uh, but it, it, with all the, um, things that are in there, that are prohibited from being in there, makes it very hard for the landscapers to weed-whack around the monuments, the, the headstones, and they actually start to look very untidy. So in an effort to make it look better, we need to, uh, do this, and, you know, these cemeteries are old, they're historic. I mean, you walk through there, there's people that have been buried there since, I'm not exaggerating, seventeen eighty-three, eighteen oh-two, and I'm just curious as to who these, some of these people are, I'm gonna do some research on it, because I think it's pretty cool that somebody told me that there's people that were, that are buried there from the George Wa, Washington era, right, so, it's interesting. So that's all.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
I have this paper I just gave you as a, a little, um, spreadsheet on our website, fifty-seven hundred and eighty dollars a year, and, uh, the bottom part tells you about the trafficking from last year. I think it's interesting to see that there were seventeen thousand users, for example. Talks about the traffic channels, the page is just per session, kinda gives us a outlook of what happens when people visit our website, so...
And we should encourage people to use it, right, as a resource? I think we're getting our money, please.
You gonna put the blood drive?
We're getting our money, so...
I think so.
You gonna put the blood drive?
Yeah, yeah, it's all going on, social media and the website.
But we're, we're gonna do both sites though, still, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Also have a, we're gonna have a job opening, uh, in our building department, starting soon, so we'll be posting a, um, job description on, on our website.
That's very interesting. Mike, you got any communications?
Yeah, I've got some updates from the planning commission. Uh, we have to review our bylaws annually, we reviewed ours, we made some changes, we adopted the new changes. One had to do with membership, our membership was not consistent with state law, so we updated it. The meeting dates, uh, needed to be updated for the, uh, first Wednesday of every month, and then finally, there was an area there that said, if you put something on hold for more than two months, it needs to be removed and put back on, and we changed that to six months, cause our practice has been that, we've been putting things on hold for more than two months. And there's a couple of things that are coming to, um, a public hearing in our June meeting, that will, if they're, um, if, if the planning commission approves them, they come into our board meeting, and the two items, one is regarding roadside stands, and the other one is banquet halls. Not the first time you guys have heard of it, but, uh, we'll, we'll be reviewing the ordinance in a public review in, uh, June, for both of those things. That's it, Mike.
What about, um, the goals, anything with the goals that you wanted?
Uh, goals were finalized.
Goals were finalized? Okay, we did talk about getting a meeting together between all three, like, the planning commission, the ZBA, and also the board.
We've done that a couple times in my tenure on the planning commission, we don't do it enough. But it really is, uh, good that all three get together, it's, it's a good team-building activity, and also a good educational, like, everybody levels at us to the respective roles of each of the boards.
And we wanna try to put some kind of a date together, is it usually done during the day, or during business hours, or is it?
Uh, we have usually done that in an evening.
Agreed.
Uh, like, six thirty, seven o'clock.
Okay.
And Joe Tangary, or our planning consultant, is the one who usually coordinated that.
Okay, maybe we can throw a couple of dates out there, and we're never gonna probably get everybody to agree, but, you know, maybe we can try it, I think it's worth a try.
Yeah, most people enjoyed it, cause, uh, in the, in the past, we've had some good, good turnouts.
Okay, all right, very good. Chief?
Yeah, I got one thing of good news, we, uh, we sponsored a young man in Northeast Oakland Fire Academy. So he's just at the completion stages of the academy, he, uh, took his state-written test on Monday, and he takes his state practical, all the activities, this Saturday, so...
Is he riding with us?
He's just coming to trainings and stuff, so, right now, but, uh...
Okay.
It's in the mail next week, you know, and he does the Saturday with the state practical exam.
Okay, all right, sounds really good, thanks.
Yeah, and we'll, uh, bring him in and introduce him to you.
Okay, how did it go with your, um, training over at the building they're gonna turn down, tear down, and, uh...
Oh, it's already tore down, yeah.
Yeah, they knocked it down, right, but how did, how did the training?
It was, it was nice, they just tried different techniques, you know, escaping through black walls with different tools, and different sizes, and jaws of life. So it's, it's invaluable training, you can get a house like that, carte blanche to destroy it.
Were you able to get, um, another department to train with you, or I know our mayor was also?
I think our mayor went there, but it was a short timeline.
Right.
Sometime it just, we had, what do we have, we, we, we had a week, but we were able to get two training sessions out of it, plus some daily training, so it's not really enough time to coordinate, uh, multiple fire departments, but we have in the past, but if we can get one where we can get a little more time...
Okay.
Well, we got good use of it.
Go ahead and hear that, yeah. All right, um, nobody, I don't have nothing, I'm... So if that's it, we're, we're gonna go into closed session, wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Appreciate everybody's, uh, participation from the residents, and, uh, we're gonna, uh, we're not gonna have a motion after closed session, it's just basically for discussion, so...
Yeah, we have to make a motion to go into a closed session.
Thank you, good night.
Probably wanna read that.
So, item seven, okay, hmm, gonna go into closed session to consult with our township legal council regarding the trial or settlement strategy in connection with litigation in the matter of Solvaris Net LLC versus the Township of Bruce, uh, United States District Court, Eastern District of Michigan, Southern Divi, Southern Division Case Number Two Two One, CV one-one-nine-two-five DML, and we're going to closed session at nine P.M.
Second. Second by Susan.
Take a ten-minute recess.
All in favor.
We gotta get him, we're right on time with the nine o'clock.
All in favor. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Yeah, ten-minute break. Give it to me in minds.